I call this meeting of the Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:00 on August 2nd, 2016. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. Please note that we have added an additional personnel item for discussion. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Sorry. I don't know what we did. All those in favor first say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item is honors, awards, and the recognition. Dr. Meyer?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Carron. At this time, if Dr. Grant will come up and help us in assistance with the honors, awards, and recognitions.
This is one of our favorite times of the board meeting. Tonight, we will have several honors, awards, and recognitions. We will begin with our spring state championships. Jennifer Weaver, Director of Secondary Education, will come forward. She will start us with those presentations.
Good evening. I'm really pleased with the turnout we were able to get for this time of the year. Everyone's very busy, and we had a lot of seniors. But I did want you to know, if you'll notice from the agenda, we had eighty-seven students that were invited to be recognized tonight. But we do have a great turnout. So we'll begin this evening with Christiansburg High School. Coach Tommy Trotter is here to introduce his state champion.
Okay. Sorry. I'd like to call Ashton King up. He is a 3A state champion in the long jump.
his athletes.
He worked hard this year.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer, members of the board.
He finished second as a runner-up last year and was determined to win the state title this year. And he won with a jump of twenty-two feet, three and a quarter inch.
Thanks for having us out tonight. I've been in athletics as an A.D., a coach, thirty-five years, an athlete myself in high
He'll be competing next year for Liberty University as a decathlete, and I'd like to wish him the best of luck.
school, and I can tell you, last spring was just an extraordinarily special, special time. We had six teams that made it to the state championships, competing for the state championship, five of which finished state runner-ups, one which was a state champion, and in all my years, I've never seen anything like that. I know folks at Blacksburg say they're kind of used to that sort of thing, but I don't remember it happening. And I'm very proud, starting with our coaches, our athletes, our parents, our teachers, just our administrative leadership team. We have much to be proud of. I'm going to introduce you first to our track coach, Brandon Baer. This was his inaugural year. He's keeping the legacy going, which was established by James DiMarco with Boys and Girls Outdoor Track. Brandon Baer.
Good evening. If I could have my track athletes come up here. Did you guys coordinate in some way? And I wasn't aware of it. Okay, so, a bunch of my athletes are not here this evening, but that's okay. I wanted to just briefly talk a little bit about what we accomplished as a team. Both our boys and our girls finished second in what was a very interesting end to the season. You may be aware that at the state championships that Saturday, there was weather, and the meet was stopped at that time and thought canceled. We were on the precipice of winning a state title, which would have been our first in a while in outdoor track. We were very excited, and then extremely disappointed, and then very excited again when they announced that the state championships would resume the following Wednesday. So we were chomping at the bit to go up there and prove ourselves. Going into the state championship, our boys were expected to get, when I looked on paper, we were expected to get third, by a decent margin behind first. We ended up finishing at the state championships with the boys' team five and a half points behind first place. So, some of our boys that were at the state championships and competed well for us, Cole Beck is a, as a sophomore this past year now, is a junior, ran and, won in the 100 meters in a new state record, won in the 200 meters in a new state record, and ran as a part of the four-by-one team with Noah Ramsey, and also Ransom Castleberry and Ty Quest Terry, who are not here, in a new state record. So that was Cole and Noah. On the boys' team, we also had, for state championships, the boys' four-by-800-meter relay, which is always a point of pride for us. That was Ben Fleming, is here to the far right. We also had seniors Sam Teller and Daniel Moloskis, as well as fellow junior Ethan Edwards. So two of those four will be returning to us this upcoming year. On the girls' side, we had Michaela Richardson, when in the 800-meter run, .04 seconds off of the state record, so, right there, but we were not really concerned about that, but it was, it had been a nice bonus. And she also won in the 1600, and that was a state record. And then the girls, with Michaela Richardson, Kaitlin Elliott, Adia Goldston, and Eileen Edwards, won in the four-by-100-meter relay as well. Didn't get the state record, but we already have that one, so I wasn't too worried about it. For the total number, I thought this was impressive, I wanted to share this, for the total number of medals that we won outside of first place, on the boys' side, we had sixteen total, and on the girls' side, we had fifteen. Out of the girls, we had only three girls that were seniors on the roster, and only one of them competed at the state championship. On the boys' side, we have ten seniors, five of them competed states, only four of those medaled. So, looking at it as a team going into this upcoming year, I am extremely optimistic. I'm, I'm chomping at the bit myself, ready for this upcoming year. We have great things ahead of us, hoping to pull off the rare triple crown of winning cross-country, indoor, and outdoor for both boys and girls, and these guys are hard-working, determined, and ready to go for it. Thank you.
weekend, we took Boys and Girls Tennis and Boys and Girls Soccer. And Dr. Meyer can attest, he and I were there, and we were on the ground at Liberty University, bouncing all over that campus, trying to keep up with all four teams that were remaining in competition. And the one that prevailed is here tonight. There are three-peat, three years in a row, they've won the state championship, and our coach, Travis Eschman.
Well, thank you for the honor to come back and to chat about the girls again, but before I get started, I hope, Dr. Meyer, you shared the Twitter video of the Running Man Challenge. Did everybody see that?
Yeah, no, I didn't hear you talk.
The state championship was great, but the girls, I think, were more excited to do the video with Dr. Meyer. But it was a great season, and I think, you know, one of the benefits, coaching this group of kids this year, was just the attitude and the family environment created amongst the team. We started our season off with a trip to Disney, and spent a few days over spring break down, training together in the heats down there, but having a lot of fun as a team and getting to know one another. Came back with a lot of pressure on our shoulders. We were coming into the season with a VHSL record of consecutive wins. We ran that streak to forty-eight consecutive wins this season, dating back to 2014 was our last loss. And that streak came to an end this year when we tied Salem. We also tied Christiansburg as well. But we continued a new streak, which was another VHSL record for girls' soccer, and that's sixty-five games undefeated, and we're currently riding that streak into 2017 as well. So, our senior class, over four years, has a record of eighty-two wins, six losses, and two ties. Doing great things as a senior group would be expected to do. We have one person going to West Point, one to VCU, one to Kansas State, who's here tonight, several going to Virginia Tech, and two that are going to be playing soccer at Roanoke College. Along the many streaks and successes that we had this season, just a couple to name a few, one of the most, depends upon your perspective. As a fan, you hate soccer because you don't see a lot of goals scored, right? We only allowed two goals scored against us all season long, which is another VHSL record. But as a coach, that's a tremendous feeling, and as a team, helps us win games. So, two goals against all season long was a great record earned. We had thirteen players that achieved all-conference honors. We had two seniors that were selected to the VHSCA All-Star Game, and Sophia Thompson, who's not here this evening, was named the Virginia High School League 3A Girls Soccer Player of the Year, a great award. Again, as I mentioned, sixty-five games undefeated, three state championships, all of those accolades during that time, we had earned a team GPA of 3.97. So we'll be submitting that team GPA to the National Soccer Coaches Association for recognition this year. So with me tonight, I have Anna and Leah Byer, come on up, girls, Maddie Dickinson, Lee Cadlec, and Akayla Fang, and of course, my assistant coach, who was also a player, student here at Blacksburg High School, Kelsey Fuller, who's been with me for many, many years as well. So, this is the members that are here tonight for the girls' soccer team. Congratulations.
And last, but certainly not least, from Auburn High School, we have Laura Daniels to talk to you about their track program.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer and school board members. Like she said, my name's Laura Daniels, and I'm the head track coach for the Auburn High School Boys and Girls Track and Field Team, and it's a real honor and pleasure to be here tonight to present the 2016 Girls, Boys, and, Girls and Boys State Champions to you. These athletes have worked so hard, and I have to tell you that every day, they amaze me and admire them so much, and I couldn't be prouder of them. Throughout the season, they earned so many merits that it would take me a long time to go through those tonight, but they have topped it out with all-conference, all-region, and all-state honors, and we thank you for taking the time to recognize them tonight in their efforts and their dedication to their sport. During this past season, our girls' team had some success that was unseen at Auburn High School. They won the conference region and the first-ever state championship for in-school history, besting their opponents by forty-six points. School records were set in seven events, including the 300-meter hurdles, 400-meter dash, the four-by-100 relay, pole vault, 3200-meter run, triple jump, and shot put. And I'd like to call the members of the girls' state track team up right now. Kaitlin Dominey, Leah Ernest, Jada Gutierrez, Grace Hall, McKenna Hallinan, Abby Lester, Laurel Miller, Jessica Musselman, and Maddie Wright. And unfortunately, we had some members who weren't able to attend tonight, but I'd still like to recognize them. Kara Ashworth, Brianna Boyd, Michaela Boyd, Ashley Givens, Jessica Nagel, Madeline Sale, Kaitlin Stevens, and Abby Stone. Also, additionally, we'd like to recognize two individual state champions. Maddie Wright was the state champion in the 300-meter hurdles and the pole vault, and Leah Ernest, a two-time state champion in the shot put. So, we're really, really proud of these girls and all that they've done to contribute to the first state championship ever at Auburn. Thanks, Leah. They enjoyed a three-peat this year. This was their third straight state championship, and they earned it by winning, besting their opponents by fifty-nine and a half points. That's a pretty big margin. And they also won the conference and region championships as well. We set school records in eight events, including the 1600-meter run, the 3200-meter run, the four-by-100 relay, the four-by-400 relay, the 800-meter run, the steeplechase, and the, and the boys' discus, and we set a new state record in the boys' four-by-800 relay. So, super proud of these guys. The members that are here tonight that we'd like to honor, Hunter Carter, Ethan Crockett, come on down, Trevor Dominey, Jacob Thompson, Branson Weeks, and Tyler Wilson. And unfortunately, we had a large number of our team that couldn't be here tonight, but I'd like to mention them as well. Carter Brockman, Cameron Chestnut, Austin Crockett, Tanner Dehart, Jordan Flemer, Fleaner, sorry, Adam Fithian, Caleb Hallinan, Nolan Harris, Brandon Justice, Justin Light, Lucas Matthews, Taylor Naff, Richie Romo, and Brandon Turman. Additionally, we had three individual state, state champions. Trevor Dominey dominated the 3200-meter run, and he'll actually be running cross-country and track at Charleston Southern this fall, so we wish him the best. And we had two other state champions that couldn't, individual state champions that couldn't be here tonight. Cameron Chestnut was the state champion in pole vault, and Taylor Naff in the shot put. And so, we thank you for taking the time to recognize them, because they truly have put in a lot of hard work and certainly deserve a big round of applause. So thank you very much.
Association, and Dr. Meyer will present those awards.
Let me first congratulate our student athletes. Being a former high school teacher, I was, I was an athlete, I was a coach, I ran track, I ran cross-country, and I know what you guys are doing, and when you say you're winning state championships and setting state records in, in events that I ran in, and I'm looking at your times, it's amazing how fast you guys are, and I know you work hard at it, and it's, it's amazing how great our athletic programs are. They really are. And I want to mention, too, that both Auburn High School and Blacksburg High School won the Wells Fargo Cup this year, which is the, basically, it's the best high school programs in the state. There are six given out, one in each division, and we won two of them. So, that's, that's pretty, pretty awesome. So, I appreciate the hard work of our coaches and all of our student athletes. All right. Next up, Montgomery County Schools received four communication awards from the National Public, National School Public Relations Association. We received the Golden Achievement Awards in Crisis Communication, Award of Excellence for the MCPS Recruitment brochure, the Award of Merit for the Model for Effective Instruction Video, the Honorable Mention for our Employee Newsletter. And the person responsible for this is Brenda Drake. She's our Public Information Officer. She coordinated all of these efforts. Out of almost a thousand entries in the awards program, fewer than half received any recognitions, and we received four, actually, winners. And so, tonight, we'd like to recognize Ms. Drake for all of her skills and expertise in the field of public, public relations. Ms. Drake, would you come forward?
Jennifer, my phone's right there.
Hers is laying beside our laptop.
and the athletes of the night. Thank you.
I see one individual's name, so when I call your name, please come to the podium and state your name and address. Mr. Carl East. Nice to see you again.
Carl East, 4730 Calaway Street in Elliston. I want to thank you for being able to let me come to speak to you tonight, and I'm going to make it as fast as I did last time. You know, we spoke last time about the needs that we need in Shawsville and Elliston. You saw tonight, state champions. These state champions didn't get there by having little facilities that they couldn't work out in or increase or improve theirself in. And that's what we want for our kids down at, in Shawsville and Elliston, to be able to come back here to be a state champion as well. But they've got to have facilities. The other thing, when I sat through your meeting last time, I listened to a lot of things. We were intent on listening to what you had to say, but the one thing that I pulled out of that meeting that really bothered me was you had three principals that talked about their tardy programs and how well they were doing. And then the one thing that we had, Eastmont and Shawsville had one dedicated truancy officer. No other school had that. We want to help you help us, all right? We want, these kids have got to get, they need an education. They need to be able to get into school. You know, you talked about going in and, you know, taking things away from them, consequences. Well, if you have nothing, you can't take anything, all right? And I'll be honest with you, if you're around my area, you'll see some of the kids, you can't take anything that they don't have, when they don't have the parents to sit back and back them. When they don't have the backing that they need, you can't take anything away from them. Send them to juvie. They've got stability at that time. They, they might embrace it, and that's the thing that we've got to be, we've got to be passionate for these kids. I am passionate. I've been, I've been a volunteer, scout master, youth leader, football rec, coach, you know, just to be there for the kids. I've had boys come through that, you know, have come up to me and said, "I'm glad you're there, because my dad didn't show up." You know, and you've got to be there. We've got to be there for them, and I'm passionate for them. I'm passionate for our kids in our area, and we need your help, and I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else right now who wishes to address the board from our audience? Hearing none, public address is now closed. The next item is the consent items. If there is nothing to be pulled from the agenda, then we will consider them approved. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda, board members? We have three items, as you see, three grant proposals. Hearing and seeing none, our consent agenda is approved. Next item is payment of the bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills?
So move. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion regarding the bills? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bills are paid. Next item on the agenda is this report from our superintendent, Dr. Meyer.
All right, thank you. Well, it's that time again. New teachers arrived yesterday, and was excited to talk and speak with them, and I hopefully had a good first day and a good second day. Tomorrow, all of our teachers return, and we're excited to have them back, and I hope they're excited to be back. Next Tuesday, our students start, and this coming Friday will be our opening session at, at eight is the breakfast, 8:30 is the actual start time. Did I get that right?
Seven fifteen breakfast.
Seven fifteen breakfast? It's on my calendar. I think it's on yours, too, okay? Be there at seven fif, seven fifteen, seven thirty, you can have something to eat. So, and then our guest speaker will be John Antonetti, and I'm really excited to have John join us in our professional development. John is, is an expert on helping teachers understand how to engage students in the learning process, and it's something we've already been working on, and I think he's going to continue to move us forward. And really excited to have John and with us and working with our schools. He's going to focus this year on our middle schools in terms of engagement, and he'll be working directly with our teachers. And he's just, he'll be speaking at the, actually, Thursday, he'll be actually with all middle school teachers. Friday, he'll be with us in the opening session, but he'll be back several times to work with teachers in small groups, actually, throughout the year. So, real, real excited to have him. You know, kids are already back in schools and high schools. A lot of athletes are already back. I had to privilege yesterday, I went and interrupted Coach Comer during the middle of his practice, and he was happy to say hi, just for a second, and, and the football players are out there in the hot sun, and, but he's, he's taking care of them. Then I drove over to Blacksburg High School, and Coach Wells, same thing, a lot of kids out, working hard. Also got to talk to a few of our cross-country kids who are already preparing, and asked them, was today the first day of practice? And they said, "No, we've been working all summer." I said, "So that's exactly right." You know, these kids just don't, they don't come the first day of practicing, and then they're not successful. It's something they do all year round, and I know, I've seen our kids in the weight rooms and working hard all year round. So, just, it's great to see kids back in schools, and our bands are practicing already, and so it's, it's a lot happening. So, so, next Tuesday, kids come back.
The next item is our board member reports. Mr. Chabak.
All right. So, I will mention that I think I missed the June meeting, it was, and we didn't have a July meeting, so I'll just mention briefly that I did, I'm continuing my tours of all the schools, visited Christiansburg Elementary, Christiansburg Primary, and Bellevue. Some great things going on there, and obviously, some capital needs there, too, so that was good for me to see firsthand. I also attended the Southwest Virginia Governor's School Quarterly Meeting on June 21st. Their report, a great turnout for summer camps and young scholar days. Their orientation is next week on August 9th, and we also discussed some legislation updates having to do with the funding model. So the Governor's School is always kind of struggling a lot of times with the same things we are with funding, so, so that's my report. So, so that's my report.
Ms. Franklin? Ms. Franklin?
Yeah, the one thing I just wanted to mention, I volunteered at fee payment last week at Blacksburg High School and it was quite different from the days, I know when like Marty and I were PT SO presidents, where you'd have eight, 10, 12 volunteers lined up and you'd have two hours of parents in line waiting and waiting to pay their fees. And now with the new online system, it was a completely different world and it's a great use of technology, obviously. The one downside to it is you miss that direct interaction. That's not great for our PTAs, often when they would do their membership. It's also an opportunity, you know, sometimes that's the only time you see those parents. So, I mean, I, I think it's wonderful that we're able to do it like that now, but I think it also means that we need to find other ways to reach out to our families since we aren't doing that anymore. But it was interesting to see how quickly they were gone.
Ms. Grab?
Yes, I attended the Blacksburg High School freshman orientation last night. It felt a little weird because I no longer have a freshman. But anyway, it was very exciting. Mr. Kitz delivered a very empowering and exciting and message to the students. It's interesting, as he and I were talking before the presentation, BMS's sixth grade class is the largest class they've ever had in history. And the ninth grade class this year is extremely large. So that does take us into another discussion about where we fall with athletics as far as the division. But anyway, it was great. There was a full house and everybody had lots of good questions and found out a lot of great information. Today, I attended Price's Fork's first ever and hope it continues program called Giving Roots, where we were able to get in a majority of the pre-K and kindergarten students. And Blacksburg High School was a cosmetology program. We're giving haircuts and, and braiding hair. And we had face painting, we had a big old jumping gym thing and the students just had a great time. We had free pizza, we had the health department there to sign up anyone who didn't have their immunizations yet. We got the forms for those who didn't have their birth certificate so we could request those. There was a group giving out gently used shoes to students. Local businesses also donated school supplies and backpacks. So it, it was a, it was a great turnout and the kindergarten and pre-K teachers were very excited to see their students. And we hope we have more next year. Hopefully we'll apply for the same grant and get, get that funded. So that was great.
Mr. Lyons?
Since I missed last meeting, and apparently I'm the one who's hot, I just wanted to commend our summer school graduation. That was amazing. You know, it was, it's the first year I've been able to attend that and I just wanna commend both those who are involved, the parents. I was shocked when I walked into that room and it was full. And, and it was very, very pleasing to see that. So thank you guys, you do a great job with that and very proud of the, the program that you put on. And lastly, I'll just say this, you know, with us opening schools, there's, there's lots of anticipation in the Lyons household for Thursday about who we get as our fifth grade teacher. So we're all, we're getting excited for a great and fun school year, so.
Well, I didn't get to do a whole lot of the summer, but luckily I'm in a profession that I don't always have to go somewhere. There's always people in there ready to talk to me and ready to share everything with me on a daily basis of what they think needs to happen in the school system. And I try to listen. But one certainty that one gentleman came in and I happened to have a few minutes and he was sharing with me about an RSVP program that we have like at Auburn that works with the kids in a, like a life skills kind of program. I, I didn't know, but it was, it sounded fabulous. And he said the kids were really receptive to him. So I thought that was really, really neat and, and it's something that needs to continue and carry on. I didn't get details because I had to go back to work. And just to piggyback on what Connie was talking about, I agree, the younger definitely you would miss. But I tell you what, we missed paying car passes and last Tuesday, I mean, I get one day off a week and, you know, my daughter found out at the pool, "Mom, we missed it, it's over at two and we can't play. And if I can't drive to school the first day, I'm gonna be so mad at you." So thank goodness for online payment because I would be so up a creek. I'm such a horrible parent in my daughter's house. So I do see that both ways. And just on a note on the teachers' meeting Friday morning or get together, I hope to come. But as I was sharing with you guys, you know, one of my girls had a brain aneurysm last Friday. And so she's 38 and she's in Rennett Memorial. So I was already down a girl and now I'm down two. So I'm not gonna be off a whole lot. And so just, I'd love to have your prayers for her and if I'm not there, just understand why.
Thank you. I'd just like to welcome all our new teachers to the county. It's a great place to work. And also thank everyone, all the hard work throughout the summer. You know, like Dr. Meyer said, if you think that nobody's working in school summertime, that's not the case. And, and wish everybody a great school year. Looking forward to this, exciting.
Alright, great. Next, grant proposals. One, security equipment project. Since 2013, General Assembly has funded annual school security equipment grant for Virginia school districts. This year, we applied for $100,000 to purchase equipment for following branch, Kipson, Mark, Beeks. The grant is brought to you tonight for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the grant as presented, board members?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion on the grant, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Grant is approved.
Okay, thank you. Next breakfast, breakfast carts for our schools. We've requested $23,000 to purchase breakfast carts for five secondary schools. These, these carts will assist with implementation of the grab and go at every school. This grant is brought to you tonight for your approval.
I have a motion to approve the grant as presented, board members.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion, any questions on the grant?
I think it's a great program to expand, having witnessed it in action a couple times this spring, so it's great.
I think the carts will make a big difference too. I know like at Shawsville Middle School, that's a real challenge for them. So having the carts will really make a difference.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the grant.
Okay, thank you. Next, school readiness. Of course, our students are back in a week from today. We have two of our folks will present to you, Ms. Wickham and Ms. Weaver, in the school readiness presentation.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Meyer, I can assure you that everyone is working hard to make sure that school is indeed ready. If you take a look at our elementary projected numbers, you can see that we do project that enrollment will be up. And you can also see that we were able to add back in five teaching positions. We're really excited about that. Also, in addition to that, we have added in a pre-K class at Bellevue. And we're really excited about this new three-year-old half-day program at Eastern Montgomery. Pat Nelson, I want to mention that Pat Nelson and Ms. Boyle worked really hard to get that ready. And I do not expect you to be able to see all of that, but did want to mention that all of our schools have scheduled their back-to-school nights and all of their events and pre-K and kindergarten orientation events.
We also have been working very hard to get everything ready at the secondary level. You can see, I will, I will mention, you mentioned Blacksburg Middle School earlier having record enrollment. It's actually increasing by the week. They registered another 20 students just this week. So these are projections. When we come back with our 10-day enrollment, we'll update you with actual numbers. But I certainly anticipate that number being even larger. The great news is that we were able to add back in eight positions at the secondary level this year. And so you can see that's really had a positive impact on our PTR as well as our programs. I had the pleasure this afternoon of working with the new world language teachers and one of them was a French teacher. So we were able to add French, expand our program at Christiansburg Middle and Christiansburg High School. So that's a wonderful opportunity for our students. And I also provided you with back-to-school nights. We'd love for you to attend any that you're available. You have lots, lots of options between freshman orientations, back-to-school nights offered here. And then Ms. Wickham and I also wanted to just take a moment to welcome our new administrators. We've had some changes that we're very excited about. Mr. Muller at Bellevue Elementary, Ms. Brolgraves at Christiansburg Middle School. As you know, you're working through the process with Dr. Meyer at Shawsville Middle School. And Andrew Hippel at Eastern Montgomery High School. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you have of us.
You said you're already having more, it was great to see the secondary PTR dip below 20. Do you think it's gonna stay there? Or when we see 10-day enrollment, are we probably gonna be back?
We're gonna be close. There, there's certainly been, we were able to add in as part of our planning process, an extra position at Blacksburg Middle School. So we did anticipate growth and were able to, to plan for that, but it, it's gonna be close.
And do we, as far as, these enrollment numbers are somewhat important for a lot of variety of reasons and often we make predictions and then, you know, obviously we can't predict exactly. But do we keep kind of a historical record of what we predicted when and then what the actual was so that we can spot trends or assumptions that we're making that may not be 100% accurate? Are we doing that?
We do. What these numbers actually are each year, we just flip-flop that column. So next year, the projection will become the actual and then when we present you with our projection, you'll be able to see how different the numbers were. So when we do that 10-day enrollment report that'll come up very quickly, you'll be able to compare the actual numbers with the projection.
And these are MCPS-wide numbers that you're using, not just your office that's using these numbers? So when, you know, when, when Dan's thinking about capital projects and where growth is coming from and things like that, he's using, he's looking at the same numbers that you guys are looking at and looking at the same projections that you're looking at?
Yeah, Ms. Shanks has a list serve that she sends them out to. Each month, we update them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, board members?
Okay. Next, the, the carryover funds for this, from this past year is 1.9 million. That's actually less than 400,000 of the total money that we didn't spend because the majority, 1.6, is actually additional revenue that we did not budget for. We did not anticipate coming to us, but yet it did, which is obviously a good thing. The spending plan is actually in the board docs. The number one priority is maintaining employee salaries. And as you know, there's been, there is possible, there will be a shortfall at the state level of anticipated revenue, which will, looks like affect us. We're supposed to know, I believe, August 26th as to the actual number. It's how it will affect us, we're looking at possibly $400,000. And of course, that's the first priority in carryover funds, is to use that carryover funds to, to go ahead and to, we, we've already issued contracts. Of course, the state puts us in a tough situation. We put, we've issued contracts. We've, of course, we've been through the, the salary study. I think we're in the right path and that needs to be the priority in my opinion. I had the opportunity last week to meet with several other superintendents in Salem with several legislators. And, and all the superintendents were expressing the concerns to the legislators. And legislators didn't seem too willing to help the ones that were there. You know, basically their hands are tied according to them. But in my opinion, sometimes it's a matter of priority as well. So, and I, I did express that, that opinion to them for us. And so hopefully it's not the entire $400,000 that we'll lose because of this because we have other things that this money, as you can see, can be used for.
Dr. Meyer, can, can I ask, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So were these representatives, representatives from our area?
Yes.
That were there?
Yes, they were.
And who were they?
Oh, you make me, I've got a list I can send to you. Who were there? Yes, yes.
I was gonna ask you to help clarify for me on, on this. I'm in support of, of what you're saying and especially with contracts being issued and whatnot, but I'm trying to understand what impact this might have on next year's budget, right? So if we use, is, is the money that we're planning to use to fill that gap, is that one-time money? Is that, is it considered one-time money because it's carryover?
Yes, it would be.
Okay. So if we do that, what happens next year? Or do we start next year $408,000 short in our budget?
That, that's the case. Kay, do you wanna? Feel free to come up and answer these questions, but yes, that will be the case.
Yes.
Okay.
We would be short by the $400,000. Now, the state did have additional revenue in there for next year's money. So maybe if the revenue comes in, I don't, they could adjust it, I don't know. But yeah, we would start the next year with a $400,000 shortfall.
I'm, I'm confused on your last statement. You said the state had, say that again?
So they did the biennial budget, so they had the two years in their budget. So this, the 16, 17 budget that we're in now, they budgeted $400,000. In the 17, 18 budget, they also budgeted salary money.
Okay.
So.
So that.
And we don't know yet if that's gonna be gone or not.
It may come in and it may not. So I mean, you understand obviously my concern, right? I mean, I've always, I don't use one-time money for a recurring expense. So what we call it or how we structure it or whatever, I mean, if this money doesn't come through next year, then we have to find that money from somewhere else to, to make up that shortfall or else are we in a position where we're gonna have to tell our staff that they're gonna take a paid cut?
I hope not. You know, it, it's, I don't wanna go there at this point.
Yeah. I mean, when, when we're in situations, I mean, this is maybe unique because of how late this is happening, but when we're in.
I've never seen it happen this late. Have you folks seen this happen this late? I've never seen this happen before.
Not for this, but it's been a couple years ago that the, the state didn't approve a budget until really late. And we ended up having a shortfall, but it was only like $65,000.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I just wanna, I think it's important how we communicate some of these things. I get a little nervous. I mean, I would much rather, I, I would much rather give a, you know, a bonus or some other kind of a payment that's not necessarily a salary if it's not money we can count on next year. Now, I'll, I'll leave that to your judgment and the staff and the board. We can all discuss that, but, but, but you know what I'm saying? In the grand scheme of things, I don't wanna be put in a position where we're in that far of a hole, right?
I think we're already in a position, Mr. Rock, because we issue contracts, these employees.
I agree and that's why, that's why I'm saying, and that's what I said.
And I guess what's, we had the money.
Yeah.
To move forward. And then, you know, it's one of those things, I think with our budgeting, it's, it's one, one year at a time, one budget season.
Yeah, and that's what I, and that was, my intention wasn't that we should do that this year. I'm saying in general, when we're in a situation like that, that's what I'd like to see, but.
Can I, can I just clarify? They said that I might have been confusing. This covers us for the 16, 17 fiscal year, the fiscal year that we're currently in, where the shortfall could come at 17, 18. However, there could be other revenue sources in addition would be the board supervisors or other state revenue.
Sure, I, I understand all that. Yep, thank you.
It's all about priorities. And, you know, and I suggest that our priority be the compensation of our employees at this point.
Absolutely, I agree. I just wanted to make sure I had a clear picture of, you know, what this means for the future.
And I will highly recommend getting in touch with all the legislators.
Yes.
I think that's what we really have to do, whether we can pound their door or send hundred emails, but.
Have you talked with Craig Meadows at all about what we're gonna be presenting? Any feel from the board of supervisors about this at all?
Yeah, we had a liaison meeting the other day and, which consisted of Mr. Meadows and Mr. Tuck and.
And Ms. Beeks.
Yeah, so they, they know exactly what we're proposing. And basically, the way we're proposing it is, is, you know, here, here are our priorities. However, if we're cut $400,000, this comes off the bottom, okay? That's the first thing we're going after is the $400,000, you know, to, to do that. Now, we end up, if it ends up being $200,000, then we have a list of items that, that will be next. And so it's, it's sort of shot in the dark right now.
Okay. So one of the things that always concerns me when we get to the end of the year and we see a figure that's almost $2 million and folks go, "So what'd you do? How'd you end up with that?" Right? So can you go into detail so that folks can hear exactly how we ended up with this much money at the end when we're begging at the beginning? Because people ask. Because people ask big questions.
Right. Katie, if you want to help me with this, but, you know, first of all, we had 1.6 million in additional revenue that we didn't anticipate. In fact, 600,000 of it came to us within the last couple of weeks of the fiscal year. And in fact, we presented that to the board supervisors to use at that point, and they rejected it. So it sort of forced us to push it back over into the fiscal year and into the carryover money. So it's, I don't think it's us not being good stewards of our money or not. It is definitely not us asking for money that we don't need. Because there, we have a plethora of projects, as you can see, that are needed. And I think we, you know, we explained that in the budget process as well.
And I understand that, but when the public sees this number.
Right.
And they don't see the details saying, this came from this, this came from that, unexpected? You know, so that they understand it wasn't just $2 million that all of a sudden appeared and you over-projected your budget for last year and now our taxes went up? You know, so if folks have some details as to exactly where the funds came from?
You know, I'd say we were within less than 2% in spending all of our money. And that's, if you look at other governing bodies, that is, that's actually better than most.
And that's great. I'm just saying, we need to make sure that folks understand that whole process.
Right.
So next year, when we're saying we're $400,000 short to make sure we're paying our teachers and other employees, they're not saying, wait a minute.
Right.
You had almost $2 million at the end of the year. And last year, you had the same thing.
Right.
You know, what's going on?
How much was it last year? Was it?
2.5, 2.7?
Yeah. And we were aware of that, but when we get the revenue coming in the last couple of weeks, and it was 600,000, that was the first thing that came to mind, is that exact thing. And Katie, do you have any other comments about this? Or Dr. Graham, anything? How do we explain it?
Well, I'd also like to remind you, I think you'll remember when I mentioned it, that the $1 million that we already projected and put into our next year's budget is our salaries turnover in lapse. So then, we had some additional revenue that we didn't anticipate and a little bit of unspent appropriation.
And before that, we didn't put that in our budget, correct, Katie? The salary?
Correct. There were several years that we couldn't put it in there because there just wasn't much, the years that we didn't give raises. And there wasn't really a lot of savings from that. But these last couple of years with the turnover in lapse that we've been having, we've been having add-back the salary savings.
And we were, I feel like we were good stewards in realizing that in the budget that we created this time.
Look, I am not trying to say we're not being good stewards or anything else. I'm just saying, we need to lay things out so that the citizens of Montgomery County understands where this comes from, how it got there, so that we're not asking, answering a lot of questions and the supervisors aren't hearing a bunch of stuff when we're asking for more money next year to keep things running. So, okay, you're doing a good job.
Yeah, it's communication and, you know, we work with Mr. Aiken. Hopefully, our local news sources will help us.
That's what I was going to say. It's your newspaper guys, write it all. Don't just say, oh, we have extra money, write it all.
And Ms. Franklin, I wasn't trying to get a stab. I was just bringing that up so that, you know, a lot of people come and watch our videos. So the more we can, you know, publicly talk about these things and remind people of the decisions we made, the better it helps. Transparency.
Okay. I would like to mention, in terms of priority, after the employee raises is the one-to-one initiative. We're hoping that this year, we can issue Chromebooks to all sixth and seventh graders. And we're in a cycle now where that, you know, this year, we get them to sixth and seventh graders. We get them to two more classes next year. Then it will put us in a rotation, in a regular cycle. Whereas if we miss one of those grades this year, we'll be replacing Chromebooks before we issue to all students. Do you have any questions about that? So I think it's vital that we get there, so.
And this is what we essentially approved four or five weeks ago, but the supervisors wouldn't let us give us the money, correct?
Correct. That one-to-one, it's the same amount of money. Yes, exactly. Yes, they did not want to approve that for us at that last meeting. And that was $600,000 in itself, okay? Of course, the vehicle fleet is another area that we need to definitely address as well, in terms of classes and other vehicles. Any questions about any of the projects that we have listed?
And this is information at this time, and we will.
Yes, we'll bring it back on August 16th.
August 16th.
Yep. Okay. All right, next, capital projects discussion. We're going to have a forum on August 16th. You have a flyer that is next to you that we'll be distributing and provide it to all the, the back-to-school nights. We're using Twitter, Facebook, our phone call system to get the information out. The input session will look similar to the previous sessions that we've held. I will first present an overview of the capital projects, similar to the presentation that I gave you with the, my list of project priorities. And I'll present those. The groups will be divided into three. And we might have to make adjustments depending on how many folks actually attend. Each group will have a moderator. One of our staff members will moderate the group to discuss. And after the discussions of the groups, the moderator will then talk to us again and about what they've heard through the, through the actual, their groups, as the groups rotate it. And we'll go from there. Any questions?
You would like us to board members just float around and.
Yes. That would be perfect.
And the public will get to do the stickies and things like they've been able to do before for input? Or how is, how do we take the public input this time?
Right, what's going to, well, the folks moderating will actually take notes on the, they're going to take notes on the big sheets. And, you know, we'll see, we'll see where it goes that night. Because, you know, of course, the first one station will be Falling Branch. You know, and for instance, we'll have that station on Falling Branch to discuss, you know, is this something we move forward with now? You know, and then another, another area will be the Northwest, recommendation of Northwest Elementary School. You know, what that looks like. And then there'll be a station with all the other projects. What does that look like? You know, and we'll see what the public says that night. And, you know, if, and of course, if we get, you know, good feedback on Falling Branch, I mean, it's something we could agree to move forward with that night if we heard what we need to hear. You know, the other, the other areas are a little bigger. And we'll have that feedback, you know, obviously, that we can continue to discuss beyond that night.
Given the, I guess, given where we are in this process, is there going to, I'm kind of curious to hear from my fellow board members as far as, you know, at what point, when we had the first couple of these, it was kind of a, this is going to be in the future. Let's focus on what it is that you want. Let's not worry about the costs and things like that involved. And I feel like, especially with Falling Branch being an option on the table that could happen pretty quickly. I mean, time is starting to become more of a factor. You know, is it appropriate to start educating the public on the costs involved in some of these different trade-offs? Because, you know, I view it as the public that's going to support us or not on, you know, the the level of, you know, funding and plans that we need to undertake. So what's y'all's thoughts on that?
Well, just a thought that I have heard, and that I think I've shared it before, that I think, and I actually was going to share that tonight, too. I think if we could open by doing some explaining, and however you deem appropriate, because I think people don't understand why one area needs it desperately and maybe the other area doesn't need it as desperately, and we're putting money into that facility. So I think if the explanation of, you know, hey, this is some money we have. This was a school that was built to add on. We can do this to fix a problem while we have it. It doesn't put this off the board, but this is something we can do now because this can't build a school. I think people will understand better if that's the route you go at it, from what I've understood. Because even when we were at Falling Branch, and some of the thoughts were floating around in discussion, you know, why would you put money in Falling Branch when you've got CPS here that's just about ready to fall down? And I just think people just don't understand.
And that's what I'm talking about.
So I think you've got to educate people a little bit on this is what we've got. This is why we're thinking this, and this is what we can do right now to alleviate some of the problem. Then people are kind of like, oh, okay, I see. So that's my thought on that.
Definitely, it has to be explained, the fact that we have to match our resources, which is the dollar amount waiting, you know, that board of supervisors can let us use right now and what we can do with that dollar amount right now. So obviously, the amount of money, you know, plus or minus we have could only be able to, you know, alleviate Falling Branch's.
Do a fix.
Ten plus trailers, and that will be the smart way of to start.
Sure. But I'm.
The next project, we need, of course, you know, bigger resources. So it's actually mix and match, and the board of supervisors waiting to hear that from us, too, how we can, you know, the money and the project, how we can match it up. Which will be a good thing to discuss in the joint meeting, August 29th.
Yeah, I just, for me, and I agree with what you're saying. Maybe that's even more detailed than what I was thinking. I was just thinking, in general, I'm wondering if it's just time to start putting price tags on some of these things? Because, you know, there is a capital cost associated, and some of it can be significant. And some of it, at the rate that we're saving money, may take a while.
I think the numbers have been out there. I think all of those plans have numbers associated, and you can go online and find them.
Yeah, when we had that big binder, 2015.
But we have an opportunity.
It was attached, all the other signs.
But we have an opportunity for public input. I mean, I think it's a good time to recap those things and discuss that. I mean, I think, you know, when I look at the needs, and I think there are lots of needs, and I think we're going to need to save a little bit more money in the near future to be able to do some of the projects that I think we need to do. And I'm afraid of not having the money to do that. And I think the public needs to start hearing that, too. And they need to start realizing, you know, the difference between operating budget and capital needs and how that all fits together. So anyway, I don't, I don't want to micromanage how you guys present things, but I do think.
Well, you know, that third, the third project recommendation has all projects that are needed. That's, you know, that's the one that we really need to, you know, at some point, focus on and really start talking about, because there's so many things that are going to be needed. And, you know, and when I'm hearing that, that third project, whatever that third project is, it's going to be 10 years down the road. I mean, wow. I mean, you're talking, their project's going to be 30, 20 or 30 years at that pace we're going, so.
And at that pace, we'll have other projects that are then needed. I mean, it's not a rate that's sustainable, is what I'm trying to say, and.
I mean, the resources are, you know, up and about and obvious when state doesn't give money and board of supervisors have limited revenue. You know, unless you've really been the lottery, which I was very hopeful when it was a couple million dollars a couple months ago. So could take care of some school projects. I don't know how we can save money to put aside, to put, you know, plan those big projects. We have to wait the board of supervisors to be able to borrow. And then that is, of course, within 10 years. You know, that's what they were suggesting. Unless we touch the, touch the T-word, and that's a different, you know, path to go. You know, we can, you know. But I, you know, I just, you know, logically, where we can find money to build $90 million project or $80 million project, or a couple projects that adds up to that many million dollars, you know, out of the blue, without changing things. Either at the state level or local level, or within the lottery, I mean.
Okay, so when we have the meeting on the 16th, can we stick the dollar amounts on those three stations? So folks understand this is the estimated cost.
We can, and that's in the presentation, actually, for the first two projects. The Falling Branch, there's, there is an estimate that is attached to that, to that presentation. And then the Northwest Elementary School, there's a dollar amount there.
Yeah, we seen those dollar amounts last time you presented.
Right, but that third project, that's probably a little more vague, I'd say, because there's so many there. I don't know, here's, you know, here's what I recommend us doing is, is, you know, let us have the input session. And then, we're not finished talking about what that second and third project is going to be. There's, that's for sure, okay? And I'm, you know, I'm, well, I've given you my recommendation. My recommendation is that we add on to Falling Branch and get rid of those trailers and get those kids out of those trailers at Falling Branch, and something we can do right now. And hopefully, the public input will, that the public will agree with that as well. But you're right, we need to start attaching dollar figures to Project Six, that's the new Christiansburg High School, a second elementary school in Christiansburg, Shawsville Middle School. You know, the Blacksburg schools, you still have Blacksburg schools that are getting older now. And, you know, there's possible capacity issues in the future that we need to look at. So, yeah, I'd say we need to, we need to put the dollar figures up for all those projects. And the, I think that's a great way, Ms. Franklin, to let folks know, this is the number that we have to have. You know, and we can't wait 30 years to get it, get there.
And the numbers.
And to that point, I've said this before. When we built two new high schools and revamped a middle school, it was because the citizens came out and said, this is what I want. And I'm not ashamed of that T-word, because that's what paid for them. And citizens said, we need it, so it happened. Well, in Christiansburg, these children need the same thing.
That's exactly right.
In fact, their building is in worse condition, their buildings are in worse condition than the one that failed in Blacksburg and have been for years. So if it takes us pushing for a few more cents to make sure our children have what they deserve, then we need to be pushing for that. Isn't that what we're supposed to be doing? Instead of saying, let's sit around and wait for 10 years? I'm not going to sit around and wait for 10 years for that to happen. So that's what my conversation is going to be when we get with the supervisors. And with anybody else who thinks we should wait for 10 years to build an elementary school and get kids out of trailers in a high school that's, will be 60 years old at that time? No.
Well, and I'm going to back up Ms. Franklin on this and that. I mean, and I wanted to answer, answer your question, Ms. Karan, that, yeah, I mean, I, I don't know exactly how the supervisors will choose to do that. That's part of their job and that's part of their prerogative. But whatever they do, they're going to need public support. And that comes back to what I'm talking about.
Right.
Is that we're getting, you know, when we had those other meetings, we had the whole Falling Branch community come out. We had, you know, the whole CPS, maybe even CES, community come out. That's when we have a captive audience, and that's when we need to educate. Yeah, I mean, I don't want to hide this stuff. I mean, not only how much, it's one thing to say, this is going to cost $90 million. But it's another thing to communicate what that means on the trajectory that we are on. And I think that's where we need to let people know these things. I think.
I mean, obviously, the more, you know, we talked about it, the better, you know, the audience will be educated. But I also was believing that we've been trying to do, too, I mean, we're on the right path because we put that dollar amounts out in the presentation, and we will have them again this forum, too.
But more than just putting the dollar amounts out, I guess, is, maybe I'm now asking for something more specific because I'm getting some feedback from some of my board members. I think we all think this is important, that we need to tell them what that means. You know, if we're saving.
Timeline as well as.
The timeline and the money. I mean, we're saving $2 million a year, great. Except that we need a new school, or we need to remodel a new school every two to three years. And that cost is 20 million, not 2 million or 4 million or 8 million.
I think we need to put it in perspective. This is what the board of supervisors is saving for us. And this is how long it would take for us to do Project X.
Would you, would you be okay?
This is how it will affect our children and teachers and other employees during that time.
Yes.
I mean, here's what, here's what I would like to do for you folks, is with that third project, for instance, I know there's some debates and questions, what is that third project? Okay? If you would let me list out my thoughts about third project, fourth project, and then put a. and then put a price tag, and then we could do a comparison as to how much money we're, that we're, we're actually saving as a county to make those projects happen, I can, I can give you a year as to when it will happen based on what we're being told. Does that make sense? You know, in other words, if, for instance, I said the third project was a new Christiansburg High School, well, what I'm hearing now is that's 2026, 2027, because it's going to be, it's going to cost, in today's terms, ninety million dollars, okay?
And it's our borrowing power, the combination.
Right. So, you know, but we, we need to work with the, with Mr. Meadows and his folks, too, to, you know, but I think you have to let me put the projects on paper, and, and let me just prioritize them theoretically.
What, and, and what I would ask there is that maybe you have a representative list of projects from across the county? You know, Shawsville Middle School's in need, Christiansburg High School's in need. Like you said, we've got elementary schools in Blacksburg that are in need, too. Let's, let's put those all out there, just to, because I want the backing of the whole county. I want everybody to see.
Sure.
There's something in this for me, and we all need to be supporting the schools. That's kind of where I'm coming from.
I hear what you're saying, but the only thing that worries me is when you put all those out there, to me, it's like, I'm hearing, oh, well, you know, Christiansburg High School might not be that third priority. And I will tell you, you're going to have one group of citizens that's going to be furious if that is not the case. Because this is what we have been preached to and listened to for a long time. You step up to the plate for Blacksburg, and you step up to the plate for Auburn, and you're going to be next. You're going to be the one that's going to get the next high school and the next elementary school.
I think because of those types of things, I don't think we should promise anything until we have the needs and we can prioritize them. But I am committed to doing those things everywhere where they're needed.
And all due respect, I understand what you're saying.
That, that has been established for years as to what's next by our criteria.
And there's been times when we haven't had and stepped up to the plate and made it happen, no matter what it costs the county. And that's why we're having to wait, and that's okay. We needed it, but there's no reason that.
Yeah, and to your point, excuse me, to your point, getting the citizens involved. When Blacksburg and Auburn filled this room, meeting after meeting, to say, this is what we want. We demand it for our children. This is why we need to lay prices and lay the consequences out if it doesn't happen for the citizens in Christiansburg to make sure they show up and come out and say, we want this for our children, too.
You know, I'm just asking that you let me lay out my thoughts.
Sure.
You guys can rearrange as you want on the scale. At some point, you know, what happens when? But I, I think just letting, letting me give you that and everyone else's perspective of, wow, that's a long time if we keep going at this pace, you know?
That's right, yes. I think we're on the same page there.
I'm not here to debate what should be next, you know? But, you know, theoretically, I'm going, you know, I can give you my thoughts and my opinions based on the knowledge I have and our folks have right now. You know, where, and, and, and I have an idea where we go for a third project, and then a fourth project, and, and probably a fifth. I could probably, I, I know my thoughts through a fifth project. But I could keep on keeping on, you know, all the way down.
Always, exactly.
Yeah, and showing, and showing that, you know, Blacksburg Elementary School's possibly? I mean, you're looking at twenty-five years before Margaret Beeks gets touched, or a Harding gets touched, or, you know, Gilbert Linkus gets touched, possibly. And, and by, by us sort of just laying it out there, I think that's what you, that's where you're going to get some, some support.
And, and just to, to the point, I want to be clear that I, I am supportive of helping the kids across the county. And I will say that unequivocally, I will go to bat for any school, any kid, anywhere in the county. What I'm talking about is education, educating everybody. We have a tendency, it's human, we're all busy, parents are busy. There's a tendency to just, you know, the Christiansburg parents are going to come out when Christiansburg is, high school is being discussed and it's on the line. And maybe parents from other places might say, well, that's not my battle. I don't need to fight that, I don't need to support that. And all I'm trying to say is, I, I would like to see us get more unified in that we need support from all over the county, everywhere, to do the things that we need to do in Christiansburg, do the things we need to do in Shawsville, and then do the things we need to do in Blacksburg, even if that comes third, or fourth, or fifth.
And I agree with you, I just think sometimes people can't comprehend all of that. And they get caught up and lost, and, and then frightened over what it's going to cost them. And I would. So that's why sometimes, it's not that I don't think people can't handle it, it's just they can't handle it all in one dose. And, and like I said, it's, then it becomes, oh, my gosh, we already just had our taxes, and we just are built, and we just did, and we, I just think sometimes you can overwhelm if you do too much. It's not that I'm against it, I just think you have to be careful when you're talking about that kind of stuff. Oh, you guys are going to, you're going to do this, and you're going to do that, and, and you're going to raise our taxes, and, you know, I can't make it as it is, and I just, that's what I hear. So I just think we have to be careful, and I scare people to that, too.
Well, we have an award-winning communications person over here.
And she's fabulous, she's fabulous.
She's going to use her magical wand and straight things up. Well, I think a good visual, showing the needs and the rate of revenue.
Without scaring everybody, okay? There you go.
Fear, fear is a good motivator.
If it's a obtainable fear.
We obtained it with two high schools.
But if you've got six schools out there that are looking to be built, that's a little bit of far reach. That's my, that's what I'm saying.
We obtained it, but there was a, I, I think that's part of that difficulty, right? And that's part, partly, the T-word became kind of verboten after that, because of that. And I think the, the opposite of that, or the mitigation for that, is that we do a good job planning. And that's all I'm, and that's what we're doing. And that's all I'm saying, is that we start educating people upfront, early, let them know what rate we need to, you know, to do the things we have to do.
All right.
I'll be ready for you. Okay. Next, high school tardy and early, early checkout protocol. At the last meeting, we had presentations from some of our principals regarding our attendance policies as requested by you. And, you know, just, I think we have schools doing great things when it comes to attendance, and trying to improve attendance and, and working to do so, and I think the data shows it. One, one thing that was, that you all had concerns about, and it was, it was seen during these presentations, are tardy and early dismissal checkout protocols and the lack of consistencies from school to school. And so I asked our principals, along with Ms. Weaver, Ms. Diggs, to get together to come up with a consistent, a consistent, this is not a policy. It doesn't even have to be approved by you, it's their school rules. And it's, and their school rules within how policy was, was created. But they, they, they got together, they agreed on how they would handle students arriving late, or getting to class late, or leaving school early, and what would be acceptable as, as an early dismissal or tardy. And they've agreed to be consistent from school to school. And, you know, I, I, we didn't have that, and I think that that's real important, that, that we do. And we're, we're going to work hard to communicate it to parents, too, during the back-to-school nights and the registration events and that type of thing. But, you know, I, I, I'm a true believer, the kids, we have great teachers, but we can't teach them less during class. And, and our, and our kids are finding some loopholes, it looks like, to get out of class and to arrive late, and, and hopefully, we've, we've, we've tightened it up some. Any questions?
Any questions, board members?
Yeah, it's a little confusing, okay. This is how I read it, I'm breaking some of it apart grammatically. So at number four, they get a lunch detention. Am I reading that correctly? Or is it at number five that they get the lunch detention? Because I think I've heard different things from some of the orientations, and I'm not sure that that's clear.
Right, should it be like after or at?
So does the fourth unexcused tardy or early dismissal result in a lunch detention?
On the fourth.
On the fourth.
It's not or.
So you get three, in other words, you get three. On number four, you start with a consequence.
Correct, in a nine-week rating period, if you have a combination of, of four early dismissals or tardies, you will get a lunch detention.
Okay, so then on number four.
And that goes through.
Five, six, seven, and.
And eight, you get lunch detention. After, after lunch, after eight, then the, the student will get either ISS or severity detention.
Okay, so from eight on, okay, then is there anything past that? Or is that the worst thing that can happen to you?
Yeah, yeah, and school suspension or severity detention, right.
So we're going Breakfast Club Two, is that what we're doing?
Say that again, man.
Breakfast Club Two?
The eighties movie.
Yeah, that's right, you know, that's right.
For all of you who grew up in the eighties.
And, and of course, you know.
And it resets each nine weeks.
It resets each nine weeks, and, and that's what every school will do. And, you know, our schools are still working hard on incentives to make sure kids are there, and are rewarding kids who do the right thing, too, and I think that's important as well. But there is a time when, you know, there will be a consequence. And, and then, too, you know, you need to, you need to see, too, that this was sort of a loophole in the way the policy was interpreted. Parents could write students out for no reason. And we count that as excused, okay? That's not the case now. Parents are always allowed to, to write their kids out of school. But if it's not for one of the reasons listed, it counts against you towards that discipline, okay? So if you want to come and get your kid and take them out, take them to lunch one day, you can. But if it's the fourth time you do it, they're going to get a lunch detention for doing it. And parents need to understand that, you know, and we have an obligation to our, you know, we have an obligation in terms of seat hours and kids being in seats to, to gain credit and, and that type of thing, so.
Now, is there an easy way for office folks and administrators to, to monitor this?
Is there an easy way?
Mm-hmm, because we, you know, we talked about Power School and the challenges with that.
Yeah, you made the comment that you're going to work to create, and unexcused tardy.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're working, from my understanding, is that correct? We're working with Power School to create.
Yeah, Greg Karman actually was taking care of it today.
Okay, very good.
And you're going to probably laugh at me when I ask this, but when you talk about deaths and funerals, how far out does that go? Third cousin twice removed, or are we setting any limits there, too?
We, we didn't define that, but I mean, we're, our principals do need some discretion.
Right, sure.
I let our principals define these types of things. I mean, you know, at some point, you know, these are individual, these are school rules. And, and, you know, these are beyond our school board policies. And I feel real confident our, our folks can, I, I think it's important they're consistent, but, I mean, our folks, they'll get it done at our schools, so. Any other questions? All right, great. Crisis Plan, the, the board has certified a crisis plan each year. The crisis plans are collected and are available at the school board office for either view. The board be asked to certify the plans at the August sixteenth board meet, okay?
Are there any major changes or additions this year? No? Okay.
All right, the retreat agenda items. The retreat will be on August sixteenth, across.
Thirteenth.
So I'm sorry, it's thirteenth, yeah. Sixteenth is the.
Sixteen is the meeting, yeah.
It's the meeting, yeah. On Saturday, August thirteenth at 2:00 P.M. at Cross Point. And we'll begin the day with a financial report and budget update. We had Ms. Brown come in, and I'll talk to you more about her later, to take a look at our, our finance office and how it, you know, how efficiently it runs. And, and she's, she'll, she's giving me a report, and we'll report out to you, you folks at that meeting as well, with her recommendations. And also, we'll do a budget update there as well. Also, at that, during that time, you'll receive a Chromebook, if you, if, you know, if you need a Chromebook. And you'll be trained on how to use it, and how to use that Chromebook. I think you'll see it to, I know a lot, you're, you're used to your, your iPads, but I really think you'll really enjoy the Chromebook even more once you get used to the, the Chromebook and being able to use the Google Docs and the Google system. And I think you'll also appreciate why, once you start using it, why we're investing so much money in it, and in it as well for our classrooms. And so, real excited about sharing that with you. And then you'll discuss the superintendent's evaluation process, and discuss a board self-evaluation as well, and what that may look like. Ms. Karan?
Yeah, for the superintendent evaluation process, you are all aware that there are seven standards, and then with the tons of indicators attached to the seven standards. So what we talk about with the Dr. Meyer, it will be nice, those indicators tied to our goals by him. So when it's time for us to evaluate, we will know the standards, we'll know what the indicators to look, and we will have the data, so the process will go pretty smoothly. So that's, that's what part of that evening. And the other one is about the board self-evaluation. This is something I've heard has been done by other board, boards that I've been, you know, when I attended National School Board Conference in Boston, that was one of the topics that I follow, a bunch of other different states' school board association presentation on that. And it, it was like the retreat regularly done by the boards in most places. So since I, you know, haven't through one, I thought if the board, you know, if, if that's the board's will, if you all wanted to go through, it's basically, you know, it's on what is the effect of board governance? And then, you know, what are we doing? And what are our strengths and weaknesses? And if there are weaknesses, how to improve. But again, this is something that if we all wish to go through, I just wanted to put it out there. So we will have a consensus, and how we feel about it, we can discuss.
May I ask, this is a general sched, scheduling question? I think I sent everyone a message saying that I am not going to be able to be there past dinner. Is there any possibility, I'm not sure who's involved with each one of these presentations, of us flip-flopping technology with the superintendent's evaluation and the school board's self-evaluation? Because I won't be there late, and I don't need the technology part.
I was actually wondering the same thing, too, because I, I'd agree. I think Mr. Lyons should be able to be included on these particular items, and I know he's very techno-savvy, so that part's not as.
Is that a possibility with the way we have things scheduled out?
Staff arranged for this, so.
It's okay with me if, if it can be done by the staff, and there are no objections from my part. Work for me?
Yeah, it's not a problem with the staff.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Ready?
Yes.
Okay, the, the, the next item that you had asked to be placed on the agenda was the display of the mottos. And open it up to, for you folks to discuss. Should we say first that the board supervisors have, have, have agreed to actually put three mottos on the wall behind us? And they're looking now at some possibilities of what it's going to look like. I've seen, like, In God We Trust on one side, the County Seal in the middle.
At the center, yeah.
Or, and then on the other side, the.
State motto.
The state motto, yes.
And I'm not sure how they're going to do that with the door and the clock right in the center.
What is the state motto?
Help us out, who can recite the state motto?
December tyrant, tyrannus, yeah, that one, the one that's on the flag.
Exactly, that's it.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll start the discussion, I brought it up. I've, you know, I've always been proud watching you guys recently, and in the past, and currently, of Montgomery County School Board of having inclusive policies for everybody in the community. And I hope that members of our district, especially our students, feel that the school board and their schools are welcoming and non-discriminatory, and I'd like to keep that tradition going. And, and that's why I brought up this, this, the issue of this motto. Just so that my intent is not misconstrued or misrepresented here, I do want to reiterate that I don't personally have a problem with the motto. I, I am a Christian, I've been attending church my whole life, I was a youth counselor, and I'd also like to reiterate that as a student in Virginia Public Schools, I met with and worked with lawyers from the Christian Legal Society to defend the rights of high school students in my school to be able to organize during activity periods. So I was fighting for religious freedom, so I don't want to make this a personal thing or charge it any more than it needs to be. But there, there's two issues with these mottos that, that. But there, there's two issues with these mottos that, that raises a couple of issues for me. One is that I'm uneasy about having the motto so large with some of the divisiveness that's come with it, and how it might come across to some of our religious minorities in this county. Whether we like it or not, I think that people are going to associate the motto with us if we're meeting here underneath it. And so that's why I say it just makes me uneasy. When the public discourse over this in this county was so strongly associated with Christianity, and I saw phrases like, "I want you to defend my God," "I believe in Jesus Christ," and things like that. It starts to become a little bit difficult for me, and I imagine for others, to view the motto as purely patriotic and ceremonial. And it starts to kind of have a, a tinge of identity politics with it, I hate to say. And given our country's complicated history with religion in schools, and given MCPS's history with being inclusive, I especially don't want to give a hint that we might show some religious favoritism. And I think it's hard not to do that, given the history, because even when Representative King, who made the motion to add the motto, he acknowledged that it could be divisive. And I don't want to be divisive, I would, divisive, I would prefer that these types of, that we just stay out of these types of politics as much as we can. And I know to some degree, we're, you know, we're being dragged into it a little bit, you know, but I don't want people associated that divisiveness with us. And I prefer to just focus on education, but, you know, we've repeatedly affirmed the sensitivity and inclusive policies for minorities and marginalized individuals in our district. We've done this for racial minorities, people with disabilities, sexual orientation, identifica- sexual identification, and among other things. So I guess I was hoping maybe we would consider affirming the sensitivities of religious minorities and non-religious minorities as well. The second issue that this raises for me is more procedural. And that's that currently, you know, these chambers belong to the board supervisors, and I respect that, and I respect their, you know, their prerogative to do what they want with those chambers. And I appreciate that they allow us to use these, and I would like to continue to use these chambers, because I think it offers us some technological and security advantages. But, you know, when the board supervisors decided to customize the wall behind us here, they had to vote on it. We don't, you know, we don't get that voice, and we don't have a way of, you know, approving, or disapproving, or, or changing, or, you know, we don't have a say in that. And, and maybe that's the way it is, and that's tough, like, and, you know, I can accept that if that's what the, the will of the board. But, you know, for me, rather than debating, I mean, the other issue is, we don't know what other things are going to come down the pike with a different board, or even with this board, or, or whatnot. And, you know, they have maybe slightly different things that they cater to than, than we do. But I would, I would rather avoid debating every single customization that happens. And so I guess my suggestion was, you know, maybe at least looking into the possibility, and not just for this room, but for other rooms, too. Looking into the possibility of some kind of a portable, customized background that we can put up in the other meeting room, that we can put up, no matter where we may have a public hearing, or something like that, that we can customize, you know, however we want, whether we want to put the "Engage, Encourage, and Power" slogan, or something else. So, anyway, I don't want to make too big of a deal out of this, but I do think it's important, at the very minimum, to bring this up and to discuss it, and to, you know, allow members of our community who are religious minorities know that, you know, that they are, they are welcome here, and that, you know, at least I'm not going to show any favoritism religiously, anyway. So, that's my piece.
Ms. Frank, any comments?
Well, I have to agree with your comments from our last board meetings. Hopefully we won't waste a lot of time on this, because we have so many other things we need to address. When we first moved to this room, it was because the room that we were using at the old school board office was just not sufficient, blah, 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 this and that. And I wasn't so happy about that, because I thought it was kind of a snub. But being here and being able to use the technology, even though I don't like the cameras, I think it's an advantage to the board and an advantage to the public. Quite frankly, what's on the wall, I don't care, it's the business that we do here. And I think we need to really focus on that. It's our national motto. I don't understand why it shouldn't be there. If you look at other boards and other things, they have the seal of the state and everything right there somewhere in front and stuff. So that it's not here, I never even paid even attention that it wasn't. So, whatever, but I do not want to leave, you know, we've left it for one board meeting. And for me, I don't really have the ability to look and see who's there, you know, as citizens paying attention to what we're doing in person. And that does kind of bother me, it's kind of like I have my back to, you know, the people who I'm supposed to be serving. So that's where I'm at with it. Time to keep doing business.
Ms. Frank?
Well, I agree with everything Mr. Tribaka said, I think he said it very eloquently. I don't feel like we're wasting our time. I think, you know, respecting the opinions and sensitivities of our religious minorities is part of our business. And I think that's one of the points that Mr. Tribaka was making, is that, you know, maybe we shouldn't do anything, but I think we should at least recognize that what the board of supervisors did has created a situation for us that, you know, I personally feel a little uncomfortable with, that we were not considered, that our students were not considered, and our families of, you know, other religions were not considered. And again, I stated before that, you know, yes, a Supreme Court ruling is, is clear, that it is a motto, it's not considered a religious statement. But what bothered me, and some of the quotes that Mr. Tribaka said, was that the people who came and spoke about it saw it very differently. And that's what concerns me, is that it's being interpreted in that way. And therefore, having it up there, it does associate it with us, and I do worry, you know, that we are going to make some people uncomfortable. Do I want to change rooms? No, I, I mean, I agree with, with both of them, that having the technology, having a setting like this, is where we should be holding certainly our, our, we don't have to, our work sessions here, but our other sessions should, should be in here. And I'm very appreciative that the county allows us to do that. I just, you know, I just want to be clear that I do think we were sort of forced into at least considering this issue because of what they did. And it didn't take everyone into account.
Ms. Frank? You don't have anything further to say? Mr. Lyons? And to anything to discuss?
Kind of debating about whether I want to share what I actually think. I think a lot of people will assume where I land on this issue, and for the most part, I think they'd be right. My struggle with it is, is, is more of a where we are in society state with it. The bottom line is, is that we, as much as we would like to think that we are, but the, and I'm speaking to the people who would probably side with me, that I side with generally in politics and, and those kinds of things. We need to understand that we are no longer a Christian nation. As much as we would like to propagate it and say it, I just don't think we are. I think there are many statistics and many opinions out there that would support that. So when we had these debates about "In God We Trust," and putting it on the walls, and putting it on things, my struggle, from my perspective and the people that I generally agree with, is that we're making something political that doesn't need to be political. I don't feel like the arguments for it, a lot of times, I'm not saying every time, but a lot of times are not genuine. And quite frankly, for those of us who are Christians and believers, we're not doing what the motto actually says, and trusting in God with the, the whole thing. All of that said, I am in support of us being in here, I'm okay with it being on the, on the wall. For a couple of reasons. First and foremost, this is the board of supervisors' room, we use it with their permission. What they can do what they, what they want with it. I will take exception to something that, Ms. Froggett, you said, in the sense that, you know, they didn't consider us in the whole thing, or they didn't consider our constituency. They do, they represent this county just as much as we do. And so they made their decision based upon representing everyone. And they, they decided what they decided. And whether, whether or not we like it or not, as a board, to me is secondary. It's their room, we use it by permission, and if we, if we don't want to use, if we decide as a board not to use it, then we decide as a board not to use it. But I, again, I'm in favor of us staying in here. I, I agree, the technology aspect of it is good, and I hope that, you know, I don't want anyone to feel uncomfortable. I want, I want to reach out to everyone, but, you know, we all carry around dollar bills in our pocket that say "In God We Trust" with it, so. You know, it's, it is what it is. Let's, I, I am, I've probably said more than I actually needed to already, so I'll, I'll shut up now, but that's where I stand.
Thank you. Ms. Foulton, you want to add off?
Um, yeah, I probably said more the last meeting than I needed to, but I agree, Joey stole a lot of my thunder, I was going to say. But, you know, with it being a national motto, with it being on the money, and I was at that second meeting, and, and you're right, there were people that insinuated the Christian viewpoint, but the ones that spoke against it were people that not had a different religion, just weren't believers. And that's their prerogative, but I have my prerogative, too, along with every other Christian or believer in this county. And for me, you know, to me, my rights are just as important as those others. And I feel like they did make that decision, but again, that's what they're elected to do. Just like I won three elections against three very strong, great candidates because of what I believe and the people I support. So that's why I'm for it, and until I'm voted out of this office, I'm going to continue voicing the opinion that I have for certain instances like this. You know, and that's our job. We make decisions every week that affect families, parents, students, and we don't ask every one of them. We make those decisions. These school start times affected many families, but we made the decision on what we thought was best and what we thought was right. And that's what the board of supervisors did. Might only have been seven of them, but that's their job, they were elected to do it, and they did it. And, you know, so for me, there's no way I could vote against it. That's just my opinion.
Now, to sum it up, all the point of views, only thing I wish that, since both boards uses the same room, maybe at the joint meeting, or any other for- forum, we could have discussed this all together. But again, yes, it's the government building, it's their building, and we're the guests, you know, they could decide whatever they want to decide. But I wish we had that cordial, you know, conversation, even if the outcome's the same. I would have felt a little better that we were, you know, asked, our opinions asked. Now the decision is made on their side, and for me, any motto, whether, whatever it says over there, "In God We Trust," or the others, really, you know, it won't influence me on any decision I will make. And, you know, I will still keep the students in my business, and I will do, you know, my best. And each time, I might even open up a statement with that, "Everybody is welcome, whatever the background they're coming from." So I want to, you know, convince our parents that whatever is out there saying, it's not going to affect our decision when it comes to the students. Students are business, are business, and we have to get going and make decisions that affect the students. And on the other, other hand, of course, the reality is, it's a national motto since nineteen fifty-six. And since two thousand and two, Virginia Senate, both House and Senate, had the bills to put it in schools and public buildings. So, you know, it is a, it is a constitutional thing to do, and we weren't displaying, I don't know why we weren't displaying until this point, but they decided to display right now. And with that, I think I would like to use this room, definitely, I'll, I think we will do this service to all the parents that are actually watching the YouTube. So I think that's more important than what it says on the wall. Yeah, that's all.
Any further discussions, so we have to get going. Next item is, it's mine, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business for members that you would like to bring it up?
Uh, the memorandums with the resource officers, and that whole issue, we, I don't remember us getting that information, did we?
Say again?
Sep- September twenty?
We have to move it for the public input, we wanted the public input on August the sixth to do just what we did. So we decided to move that back, and it'll be a part of the presentation on discipline, it'll be served in all.
Okay.
Is that settled?
Thank you, thank you.
Next item is new business, is there any new business for board members?
Um, I'd just like to touch on the gentleman that came from Eastern Montgomery, because, you know, I saw a time when Christiansburg's weight room was horrible like that. And, you know, a coat of paint, some bigger area, it's not a huge financial stepping stone, I would think, to try to find some room for these kids, because the pictures that I saw is ridiculous. We can do better than that, I would think we can do better than that, without a huge price tag attached to it. And these are the things that, when we were talking about capital projects, I wanted to say, and I didn't know if it was appropriate or at the right time, but, you know, sad to say, we've got a lot of projects in our district that I think we could make students, parents, teachers' lives a little better with just a little bit of attention, not always money. You know, we constantly talk about business partnerships, and I understand the schools are a state, you know, and government-type buildings, that, not government, but, you know, state buildings that, that require different codes, and, and I understand all that. But I think sometimes we could sister with some of these businesses that are willing to help us do some of these projects. But that, like I said, I remember when Christiansburg was in that position, and it was terrible. So Eastern Montgomery don't need to be in that position.
Can I say, as a result of the gentleman who spoke last, at the last meeting, and then also, I had a chance to speak with the gentleman prior to him speaking tonight, we've actually added that to our list of capital projects. But of course, we have a, a, a book of needs right here, and that we can share with you folks, too, of all the different projects that fall under the, the, the others type of thing. And, and so that is, that is in here, and we do need, we do need to look at that. And I've, I've been in a situation, too, where I've been in a high school where the weight room's too small. You know, you can't, when you look at athletic programs, you can't look at size of schools and student bodies, because football puts eleven players on the field at the same time, no matter what, how big the school is, or five basketball players, it's, the, the team sizes are close to the same. And, and so that, you know, in, in fact, I've, I've seen school divisions that would fund schools based on size, athletic programs. Well, you know, that's, that's not what we want to do here.
Right.
And so we're actually looking into that, too, at this moment. But, but we have, we do, we've added that, and we have, have it amongst our different projects, we need to take a look at it. Because one thing I'm concerned about with the weight room, our safety issues, if you've ever been in the weight room, it's too small, it's, it can be hazardous. And so we're, we're going to take a look at it and see what, what we, what we can do, what we can't do. going to take a look at it and see what we can do, what we can't do as an immediate fix or, you know, so we'll look at it, I promise you that.
Well, for me, I hope that we can look at it through the eyes of, we don't have to always build something, is there another area that could be used?
We need to explore it, I don't know.
You know, I mean, he's already kind of, I think, made the mention that they were willing to purchase the equipment, so I can't imagine there not being space somewhere in that building that might not be used.
We don't know.
Right.
We need to look at it, and I'll get Mr. Martin to take a look, and...
Like I said, my whole point is, I want us to look at it as a, how can we quickly fix this? Not long-term, build a building, build a something big, expensive, how can we help them now?
All right, we'll take a look at it.
I have to agree with Jamie, because when I saw that picture, the first thing, two things flashed, what it was in 1974, when the first universal gym came into Christiansburg High School in the boys' locker room, and it was this much room to move around, and it was unsafe, and there was not access for the young ladies to get in there the way they needed to be trained, and today, you know, as we said earlier on, these kids train year-round, and they need to have that facility. I can, Eastern Montgomery was built before I came on the Board, it opened right after I came on the Board, and I do recall, there was some kind of conversation about expanding that weight room in the training, but I can't say absolutely for sure, but I'm with Jamie, there needs to be something done now.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Bernato about it and some history, and he's a great historian, and there were some, you know, there were some, there were questions then, you know, and I agree with you, I'll tell you this, the reason state records are being broken is because of weight rooms these days, and kids are getting stronger, and they make a huge difference, and, I mean, we actually supplement someone to monitor weight rooms at our schools, and it's a lot different these days than what it used to be, and it's a important part of the program and their development, so I promise you, we'll take a look at it.
And if you, all right, if you remember Penny, that weight room at Christiansburg stayed the same until Dr. Anderson came, do you remember, that's when it got redone? Remember it was in the paper? That's a long time, that's why I say...
I'm talking the old middle school.
Okay, but still, even the old weight room at the old high school was tiny like that picture, and it took years and years and years and years and years, and it shouldn't be that way about everything.
Ms. Franklin, there aren't very many people who remember that as being the old high school, so...
I do.
I always appreciate you saying that.
I just thought I'd give that little dig to you. No, I want to voice, I am in full support of, especially something that Jamie said, there has to be a solution that we can do more immediate. I know there may be something that we can do in the future that maybe costs a little bit more money, let's do something now, as quickly as possible. I've been there, I've toured the school, there's room there, let's figure it out.
And I'll say, being a process guy, and also caring about these kids, and one of the things that stuck out to me in what Mr. East said was, and he kept talking about, you know, some of these kids and, you know, kind of this, you know, let's take care of them, let's, you know, I want him and these kids in that community to know, we do care about those kids, you know, and I certainly don't want to create a process whereby, you know, I like you, I like what the list that Dan has, I like planning, if things are falling through that crack, let's try to plug some of them holes, right? But I don't want to create a process where, you know, people have to come to us with their requests either, right? I want to be clear about that, that we follow our process, and if our process needs to be improved, that that's fine, but...
Mr. East actually called me first, like, a few weeks ago, and asked me what, and I told him to do what I already did, so you can blame me.
Oh, it's not a blame, I think it's great, I really appreciate him coming.
He did reach out.
I would like to hear more, actually, from public, I mean, more people attend and tells us things, whether needs or good things, bad things, I mean, all sorts of things.
You know, this carryover, Bunny, that we're talking about tonight, will go to good use, plus, you know, in the Board of Supervisors' budget too, there's $750,000 that they'll still, will still seek approval on their end, if they have talked to us about their carryover coming our way, so, you know, that goes a long way for these projects too, so...
And one of the other things is, you know, our partners, you know, in the past, that community did not have a lot of industry or anything down there, now they have quite a few folks. Bring them into that building and let them see, and these are the students of a lot of their employees, you know, see what they can do to help with the situation too.
Well, and being involved with the Touchdown Club at Christiansburg for so many years, I know and saw what parents will do if you say, wow, we can take this room and we can do this if you guys can raise the money, I mean, you'd be surprised at what can happen if you say, here's a place, you know, this is where we can put this, but you guys got to fill it. You'd just be surprised with what people and involvement, and that's 10 years I've been on this Board, that's all we talk about, is parent involvement, getting everybody involved, let's get them doing, let's get them going, okay, well, let's do it.
Any others?
Next one is announcement and information for members, Ms. Graham, do you have anything?
Yeah. Mr. Lyons? Ms. Brown? Ms. Franklin?
Yes, our back-to-school project with the backpacks, I think Mrs. Brown told me we're up to almost 200 backpacks, and things are still coming in, over $3,500 raised, and she has, I just, what she has done for this county and how it's going to affect these students, I just can't speak enough about it.
She's done that in addition to her normal duties job.
Volunteer.
Yeah.
Good. I just, on the Educational Foundation front, we are about to launch a new website that'll go along with our new grant application cycle, and we'll be announcing that Friday at the opening for our teachers, and looking forward to receiving their applications and seeing what kinds of interesting projects they want to do in the 16, 17 year, there'll be a lot more coming about that soon, I just wanted to put that out there.
I'm sorry, honey, what was the deadline for that?
The deadline will be October 10.
Okay.
Thank you. And next agenda item is, our agenda preparation, which you will see upcoming School Board meetings. Last liaison meeting with the Board of Supervisors has decided that we won't have the joint meeting on Monday, October 31st, Halloween, even though I suggested we could have dressed up and, you know, it would have been fun, but we all agree that the next joint meeting will be nice to have January 30, 2017, which will be right around the budget cycle, we were putting together the budget, so we thought that would be a good time for it, and that happened, that month happened to have 5th Monday, because that's what we were trying to follow, to find the joint meeting time, so instead of October 31st, after the August 29th, next one will be January 30, unless there's a need in between.
Yeah, we do have a joint, it's not on here, but we do have a joint meeting August 29th still.
Yes, it is at the, I think it's very at the end.
Okay.
Yeah, still there, yeah. So, if you don't have any other questions regarding the agenda...
I might have a quick question here, let me look at my calendar, okay, never mind, good, thanks.
Very good.
I'm good, thanks.
Then, our next order of business is going into closed session. I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one student matter and four personnel matters as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of Code of Virginia.
So moved, second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we are in a closed session.